Discussion and future actions. We have had a tremendous amount of input and discussion for several years now. Our Assistant Public Works Director is here, I guess, with a bit more information and looking, I think, for some direction from council this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So, I think what I gathered from the last time I met is, you know, we've been talking about this a lot, but I still don't feel like we've gotten great input from the public as to whether they're for it, against it. So, there was talk of maybe some ballot language or some different methods of reaching out to the public. So, excuse me, I've been battling a cold for the last week, but I'll try to get through some of this. So, I just wanted to bring four options to the table and show you kind of some of the pros and cons of each and see what your guys' thoughts are. So, the four options would be like a citywide ballot, a citywide advisory vote, a statistically valid survey, or then a Survey Monkey poll. So, with the city attorney's help, we walked backwards starting at Election Day to see what would all have to happen to get this put on the ballot this June. So, upfront, we would have to draft all of the recycling program ordinances and put that together, and then you all would have to approve that prior to sending that to the county. So, first reading of that would be March 1st, second reading would be March 17th of this year. And it would include, you know, it would have all of the rules and regulations of the ordinance set out for the entire recycling program, and then basically there would be language included specifying that this ordinance would become effective if ratified by the voters on June 9th. So, then the city council would approve ballot language, something to the effect of, shall the city amend its code of ordinances to adopt and implement a recycling program as specified in ordinance number whatever. That would have to be, that would have to happen no later than March 16th. The ballot language, you have to go to the county no later than April 6th, and then the vote on June 9th. The important part of this is that that entire ordinance would have to be available to the general public, and it would really need to be explained to them. It could be a pretty complex document. It's going to have a lot of moving parts to it. It's going to have some of the costs in it. So, to make sure that before people are checking a box for a yes or no, that they understand what they're voting on. So, some of the concerns that we have with that type of outreach to the public, we have about 34,000 voting age people in the city of Minot that would decide the fate of a program that affects about 12,700 households. So, you have thousands of people that live in apartments, multifamily units, trailer parks, that are able to vote on a program that they can't participate in, and it won't affect them, you know, as a utility-wise or anything. Like I said before, the city ordinance for recycling will be a complex document, and that has to be boiled down to a yes or no answer, and that could be difficult. If approved, then program modifications could be kind of contentious. People expect that once I approve something, that I don't expect it to change shortly thereafter. So, just something to consider, and then that decision would, of course, be binding. An advisory vote is much more simple. Basically, just get a simple question put together. Are you in favor of the city implementing a recycling program? And then approval of that no later than March 16th, that language to the county auditor no later than April 6th, and then the vote on June 9th. So, we've talked a little bit about the statistically valid survey. So, like I said before, this is probably in the neighborhood of about an $8,000 project to get a firm on board that would basically do random phone calls. For our size population, it would be just under about 400 responses that would be needed to get a 95% confidence level in the survey. I guess the benefit of this type of survey is you can ask more than one question and get more specific feedback from the public, you know. Maybe there's a level of interest in recycling at $2 a month, but not at $3 or $4 a month. We can find those levels of where that interest kind of starts to slip away. And then we're able to survey only those people that utilize city sanitation services, which is a pretty important thing. Then lastly, we still have Survey Monkey, which is, it's a free service, so that's always great. We can filter out non-users. We have a database of all of our current customers, and we can filter those out either through different questions that we ask in the survey. We can prohibit multiple responses from a single IP to prevent ballot stuffing. We're able to ask a variety of questions and gain feedback on, you know, even our current program, you know, since automation has been in the works now for over two years, how people feel about that, and just gain some additional information on what people feel about sanitation service on top of whether or not they're in favor of a recycling program or not. Now, like I said at the bottom, at this point, I don't, any data that we get, I don't find as being bad. I think, like I showed in the cost analysis last time, there's a certain number of participants that we're going to need to make the program feasible going forward, you know, and it's probably right around that 4,000 people mark. So, we don't want to implement a program if just about everybody wants to opt out of it initially. So, the more people, the more information we get at this point to find out that if we're going to have a program that has enough participation, that it's feasible going forward, then it's great information to have. And from there, I'll make it brief and leave it to you guys for questions.
Thank you, Jason. Questions for our Assistant Public Works Director, Alderman Pittner?
Jason, just real quickly on the third option you gave of going with an outside firm to conduct a survey, how do they, where do they get their phone numbers from? What database? Just public record, or is it landlines? They going through the phone book? Do you know?
Mayor Seppa, Alderman Pittner, I'm not fully aware. I guess if anybody has any information based on like the One Brand survey that was done, it would be a similar to that.
Alderman Janzer.
Just to maybe comment on that, I did participate in the presentation, the debriefing on the One Brand survey, and they indicated that they used various sources, and they did have both landline phones that were called as well as cellphone numbers that were called. And then, of course, in this case, obviously, the qualifying question that you alluded to of, you know, do you receive your garbage pickup from the city of Minot? And then you get to folks who, you know, would, if they say, no, I'm in an apartment, then they don't qualify to proceed. So, it does kind of get to the folks that actually we want to get surveyed. So, to me, if I may, Mr. Mayor, just to continue, to me, it seems like, for the reasons cited in the presentation, the options one and two, the ballot questions have flaws for various reasons. And I guess I'm uncomfortable with the fourth option as well, because you get information, I'm not sure I agree with your final statement, Jason, just because you get information, but it's information from folks who, you know, may or may not even have a stake in the thing potentially, I guess. So, you know, in order to move this thing forward, because we've, you know, we've kind of wrestled with it, I guess I would make a motion that we proceed with the statistically valid survey option.
Second.
A motion from Alderman Janzer on moving the statistical analysis survey, and a second by Alderman Olson. Discussion, Alderman straight.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just piggyback and add an amendment to this, that is, I think, pressing and also part of the conversation, Ms. Beeler walked in, and I would like, Mr. Mayor, to ask you for authorization to maybe allow a small working group, Mr. Sorenson included, I'd be willing to participate, to look at a possible partnership with Calix. There's currently a facility there. We've allocated, Mr. Lakefield and I talked about it today, there's $760,000 that Alderman Olson chaired for the last round of Community Facilities Fund. If there's an avenue where we can continue a service without having to start fresh, I think that that is a desirable option right now, sir, and I think that we need to investigate that as well as move forward with the single stream recycling conversation within the community. But I think that we cannot, or we should not, lose the opportunity of working with Calix. Their experience, their knowledge, I think, would benefit us, and if there's an avenue to proceed with a partnership, sir, I think that I would like to ask you if we can have some type of working group to look into that, to bring back some of that, while we also vet out the survey options, sir.
Second, that. So, there's a motion to amend that would include a working group, and I'm trying to discern whether or not that we're appointing a committee here, which is what the amendment includes. Is the second clear on that? Okay. We have a motion to amend, a second by Alderman Padugula, on everything that Alderman Straight just elaborated on, on a deeper dive into potential collaboration with the Calix group. Discussion. City Manager Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure the staff is clear on what's being intended here, because you'll have to vote on the amendment separately, and then you'll have to somehow tie the amendment to the work of the survey, and when does the survey work happen? Is it in concert with, I mean, those things aren't really clear. Are we expecting this committee to, which will be essentially a public committee, to do its work first, and then we do the survey, or do the survey happen at the same time the committee's going, or is the committee making a recommendation that's going to inform the survey? I guess, we don't want to get that wrong, but I think it's important, because it's a pretty sensitive issue for a lot in our community.
Alderman Straight.
Mr. Mayor, I chimed in because I didn't want to lose the opportunity, and all too often, we move, we vote, and then we move on, and I feared that we would not have this. I'd be willing to pull my amendment if you, sir, would then allow a subsequent discussion about the Calix services that are currently offered, and how the city of Minot could possibly continue with an element of that moving forward.
Alderman Janzer.
I appreciate Alderman Straight's amendment, but, and I guess, I guess I'm going to, I'm going to argue for my original motion simply from this standpoint. I think we have all had input from people on both sides of this issue. And the community, you know, is a little, the input is polarized, a lot of it, meaning there are people who say, you know, recycling is not something I'm going to participate in, I don't want it, and I don't want to pay anything to do it, and I don't want to see anything on my bill that is associated with it. And then you have other people who are essentially saying, recycling is essential, and we need to be doing it, and it doesn't even matter what the cost is, I'll pay it. And that's a long ways apart. And I don't have any way to know how many people there are in the community that feel one way or the other, because anecdotally, you know, you run into both on a constant basis. And so, the reason I made the motion for the survey is that I think that will give us some insight into a statistically valid picture of where people are at on this. And I'm certainly not against the initiative that Alderman Straight is talking about in his amendment. I think that would be great. So, that's my position at least.
So, we do have a motion to amend with a second in the formation of a separate committee looking for a little bit of a timeframe. Alderman Straight, to the answer to your question, I can appreciate very substantially the want for the deeper dive into the Calix partner, potential partnership. I think my personal discussions with Ms. Beeler and many others in the community, I think that there's a good number that would like to see that continue. However, I continue to look back at a lot of the information that's been given to us by the industry officials, as well as our Assistant Public Works Director, on what makes successful recycling, what's most affordable, and what's going to, I think, best serve the community. I'm hesitant to create, I guess, a committee that coincides with the statistical analysis for that reason. It's not that I don't disagree with it, it's essentially just looking at what is going to be the, if it is going to move forward, what is going to be the easiest, the most cost-effective, and I think the most agreeable to, I think, some folks that may be on the fence, or, you know, just don't care either way, or are just adamantly against it. I don't know if that's what you're looking for, Alderman Straight, but there is my analysis of the situation. Please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess before we hear from the gentleman, I just wanted to point out that all too often, we're creating something new that costs additional dollars. Here we have a partner in town, yeah, it might not be the ideal transfer facility, but we have $760,000 to possibly create something new. I don't see a rationale of why we should create something new when there's something that already exists. I think we all agree that we want to support the Calix mission, and I think too often, we're focused on the taxpayers that own homes. And to Alderman Janzer's point, I can appreciate that the survey question can be muddied, but we have a lot of people that can't afford homes that want to recycle, that live in apartment complexes, that want to physically, are willing to take it and drop it off at Calix. And if we have that rightly available, that's also protected. Jason and I talked about this earlier today, where, you know, we've tried to look at that before, drop-off sites and some of that. So, what I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, is that let's not close ourselves off to the menu of options and assets that are currently there, just by plugging ahead with the one question that is trying to gain more data. When we have an existing program that's already in the community, yeah, there's financial questions that have to be addressed, but I just think that we're crazy if we don't at least investigate that while we're flushing out data-related questions that are going to take time anyway. So, that's just my overall premise, Mr. Mayor, of why I think it's important to look at that.
Give me your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Brad Magnuson. I'm the chairman of the North Dakota Renewable Energy Caucus, and it's always been our position that recycling should be implemented across the board throughout Minot, regardless of whether or not if you live in an apartment building, or a trailer park, or a condo, or whatever, or wherever you live, because of the fact that not only will it cut down on your garbage bill, but it will also cut down on the amount of landfill space that we have, and it will reduce the need to expand the space in the landfill, and it'll just, it'll save money straight across the board.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, just my thoughts, wanted to weigh in on this. I mean no disrespect, but I feel like we're making a mountain out of a molehill. I think it's just a cart before the horse kind of thing. I think we can move forward with the original motion and then incorporate the discussion of Calix and a partnership after that point. Let's get the barometer of where the public truly feels. Like Alderman Janzer had said, it's very polarizing. We never get an email or a phone call saying, ah, I could care less. I mean, it's usually one way or the other. So, I support the original motion, I think, and I think Alderman Straight, and I appreciate and I agree with you that having that discussion and maybe partnership and co-op in with Calix, if they're interested or having that discussion but after the fact, I don't think, I don't think these two things need to be tied together necessarily, but just my thoughts.
Further discussion, Alderman Padugula.
My sentiment is to try to retain a resource that's been very valuable for the community in many ways, not just in terms of recycling, or perhaps we should call it waste stream management, but also in terms of helping people with developmental disabilities. And this organization's been around for many years. They unfortunately won't be doing their main mission of recycling after the end of the month, and to me, it'd be, seem important, desirable, to try to hang on to something that's been very good and served the community very well. I don't see this as an either-or kind of choice. I have no problems with getting some more information, and I think, you know, Mark's idea of a scientifically valid survey is probably worth the money at this point, again, because of the polarization and our need to assure that there's an adequate number of people who would participate, so we don't lose too much money on it. But I'm also very concerned, again, about losing a resource, a very valuable resource in the community, and just having it drift away. So, I would be supporting the amendment.
It's not often I task pulling someone in the audience up to the podium, but Ms. Beeler, I can't help but notice you're in the audience. If you could, do you have any input on, I guess, regarding future endeavors or possible collaboration to what Alderman Straight had kind of alluded to regarding, and also Alderman Padugula with the folks with disabilities, is we've had numerous discussions between you and the council over some period of time now.
Yeah, Mayor Seppa and the council. First, I have to say that I really appreciate the sentiment that I'm hearing about Calix. And as you know, we were in the recycling business for 25 years now, and it's gratifying to know that the public is sad to see that end. That said, I don't really have any answers for the future. Recycling is in a very challenging situation right now. The discussions that I've heard from the city for, I don't know, what has it been now, two, three, four years, about the path that the city wants to go is different from our business model, and we've kind of talked through all that, that there isn't really any way to marry the two of those together. If the city wanted to completely change direction and do something differently, we're certainly willing to talk about that. But the market is very challenging, the industry's very challenging, and I can't give you any quick answers as far as, okay, we should do this or that. All I can really say is that I'm willing to discuss ideas.
Alderman Straight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Beeler, at the end of the month, once the program goes away, time passes, we're waiting for some survey data, how willing would Calix be to come back to the table to say, yeah, we would consider a partnership or rebooting, say, in six months from now?
Anybody that's ever run a business knows that once you make a decision and move forward, it gets more harder and harder to change direction again. Even today, it would be a lot more difficult to make a change than it would have been two, three, or six months ago.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions for Ms. Beeler? Again, I apologize for calling you up, being in the audience, but I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Olson, did you have a comment?
Well, I was kind of going back to the city manager's question as far as a timeline. When we are considering a survey, it will have to be, the survey will have to be given by a company that does that for a business, or, you know, they have the expertise in doing that. Are we looking at two months, three months, six months? How long will it take before we can have that survey out and get the information back to us?
With that, perhaps our Assistant Public Works Director, Jason, do you have an estimated timeframe?
Mayor Seppa, Alderman Olson, I think that could be a relatively, I guess, I don't know how long the actual survey takes, but I guess my plan from here would be to basically write up a quick scope of work and get some firms that are, that do that type of thing interested, get a scope of work and a price, and then bring that back to you all for approval. And that could happen, you know, probably within the next month, and then at that point, I guess I could give you a timeline. I don't know, I don't know how long those surveys take to operate.
Thank you, Jason. Further discussion on the amendment, Alderman Wolski.
Mr. Mayor, what I hear is we have one month to have a conversation with Ms. Beeler and see what it looks like, if it looks like. We've heard very directly that every day that passes, the decision to offer a different course gets more difficult. So, time is of the essence. And so, whether the motion passes, or the amendment passes or not, you know, that particular conversation could also be explored somewhat more independently and maybe less formally than a committee setting. I'm going to support the amendment because I, we've got a month, let's use it. Let's hold a meeting, and if there's any framework that makes sense, and we can figure it out in an hour, then let's try and figure it out. If it doesn't, we've lost an hour. But, so I'll reserve my comments to the amendment at this particular point. As this larger discussion moves along tonight, I have a few other thoughts on recycling in general.
Further discussion on the amended, on the motion to amend. Mr. Mayor, yes, Mr. City Manager, I think we still do need a little bit of clarification on the scope.
Yeah, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I have a question, because I don't want to be confused, but maybe I'd ask this of our Assistant Director of Public Works. The conversation that's being contemplated in the development of this ad hoc public meeting or group, have those conversations happened recently, or over the last year, 18 months already, with Calix representatives? And what in your estimation might be the benefits, if any, depending upon your answer of doing this kind of work, and how would it inform and help you in giving us additional insights to a program development?
Mayor Seppa, Mr. City Manager, so recently, probably within the last two weeks, Ms. Beeler with Calix has reached out, and one of the things that was brought forward was the potential that they'll have a large facility that's now empty, and whether or not that could be retrofitted or somehow used, I guess, in the interim for us to use as a transfer facility. It's been a little while since I've been in that building, but it, I know it has some architectural disadvantages. It doesn't have a big wide-open floor plan. So, I guess, you know, it's where in this process does this take forward, you know? I don't need to talk about where my transfer facility is going to be if we're not going to move forward with the recycling program. So, it's, we could end up having a whole lot of discussion and find out that the public, 80, 20, does not want anything to do with recycling, and that probably puts an end to all of this. So, I guess I don't want to chase an idea like this too far down a rabbit hole if we're not actually intending on implementing a curbside recycling program. One of the big hurdles, like Ms. Beeler just pointed out, we've been going down the direction of single stream, which is still the national trend in recycling, and they are not outfitted to handle single stream recycling. They would need source separated. On the other side, if we start looking at source separated, we're looking at additional trucks, different trucks from what we currently have, and additional crew, the programs get more expensive, so.
Mr. Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's kind of, I appreciate that, Mr. Sorenson, I think that's kind of where I'm going, is if the council is intent on a single stream, curbside recycling program, as I understand it, Calix cannot accommodate that type of a program. And I think that's the question that's before the council now. I mean, because I don't know about having a whole lot more meetings on this to get to that answer. We already know that answer. If the city council wants to modify, as our Assistant Director has mentioned, our approach to recycling, and instead get away from curbside recycling and move to drop-off recycling, and/or get away from single stream or single source recycling and go to source-separated recycling, then maybe there's an opportunity. So, I think there's some frustration on the staff level that we get directed to sort of guess what the council wants, and then we bring back information, and then we have to guess again. And I think, I think we have to be really clear that what is, what is the program we're talking about? We've presented lots of different program ideas, we've cost-run those, we put performance together, and the program that we've settled on, I thought, at the last meeting where this was discussed, was a curbside recycling program with a single stream recycling, you know, content. And I think if that's still where you want to go, and I'm looking to Ms. Beeler, we're done, right? I mean, there's no more conversation. So, I guess I'd put that back to the council. If you have a different idea about how the recycling program If you have a different idea about how the recycling program for Minot could work or should work, then maybe there's opportunities for discussion. But if that's where we're at, and I thought that's where we were, it makes no sense to me to continue the conversation. Let's get to the statistically valid survey, get us informed as to how many people are going to participate, because we know we have to have a minimum number of participants in order to cost, to make this cost effective for us. And if we don't get that through a statistically valid survey, if we get something less than that number, we can bring that to you and say it's not going to work based on the survey. So I guess there's some things there that could be helpful in how we move forward in regards to some past decisions and assumptions as to where we got to where we are.
We still do have the motion to amend. Do believe that we are looking at cart before the horse. Alderman Padugula, you have the second on the motion to amend.
I wanted to ask Jason or Tom a question. If we get the results or when we get the results of the survey and if we decide to go forward with the recycling, and my understanding is the same as yours, Tom, that we're talking about single-stream, curbside. One of the permutations recently has been, which makes a big difference, is voluntary versus not voluntary. And also, the other permutation that's new to us is Calix getting out of the business. And I guess I'm wondering how long it would take if we wanted to go ahead, if we made the decision to go ahead, to actually have the recycling program in operation? Because Calix is ending, and I'm wondering, I'm worried about the interim. How long would it take? Do we have any rough idea?
Mayor Sitma, Alderman Padugula, if within the next couple of months, if we got the go-ahead to implement a program, I, maybe by the end of 2021, we could, we could go live with it. It would all depend on, you know, we're going to have to cite the transfer facility, design it, construct it. That all takes time, but I think realistically, late next year, potentially. If not, then it would be spring of 2022.
So the community would be without any kind of recycling for almost two years? Thank you.
Alderman Straight.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I heard you last month or three weeks ago, you cited, you know, let's not let perfect be the enemy of good. And City Manager Barry and I have talked about this before. This is an overall concept of managing our waste stream. I don't see any reason why we couldn't do both. Yeah, we've approved $760,000 in the budget two years ago for a transfer facility. I don't see why we couldn't at least engage a conversation with Calix about possibly using a space and possibly getting a better handle of an existing program that would allow residents in the interim to drop off. I guess I'm, all too often, we're trying to create something new when we don't necessarily have to. And I guess I'm frustrated, and I don't think that we necessarily have to conduct another survey. I'm comfortable and confident in voting tonight if we wanted to move forward. I don't know, spending more dollars, either way, we're going to upset somebody, but that's what we're tasked to do, Mr. Mayor, and I just think that maybe we should call the question. But I just think that we lose a tremendous opportunity that has, we've allocated money for a transfer facility, there's a facility, it's not ideal, it's not perfect, it's close to Public Works. I just thought it would be an important thing to maybe consider that would also allow a valuable service to continue. Now, I'm not trying to be difficult, I just, I guess I'm missing something.
Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. And I probably have to say I feel the same way, like I might be missing something because I feel like we're talking about the original motion being that we're going to conduct a survey to see if the residents are willing to implement a permanent city program, but then we have a second that's asking if we're okay with having an interim program at a Calix facility. These things are not the same. I think, again, this is a cart before the horse. If we're not even going to go down the recycling road, why are we worried about an interim facility? So I think we need to worry about the first item, deal with that, and I'm more than willing and more than excited to have the conversation of having an interim program. But I think, I think they're two different, they're two different animals, in my opinion, and I think that's why I think the cart has been put before the horse with this and to get back on track. I'm more than willing to have a conversation with Calix and to see if there's an interim program that we can provide to citizens as a drop-off facility and operate that in that fashion. But again, I think it's prudent that we give staff a direction, and our direction has been a single, single-source, single-stream recycling option that we provide to citizens. And I think that's what we need to get an answer to, if people have a palate for that or not. And then, if they do, then we go to the interim route and see if people want to go that route. If they want something in the interim, well, we get the program up and running if it were to be deemed a viable option. So again, that's my thoughts.
Alderman Janser.
I guess, I'm thinking that this amendment is to have a meeting. And I guess that I can support. However, City Manager makes a good point that, you know, we've kind of covered that ground. I'm not interested in voting for this amendment if it includes, you know, subsidizing Calix's operation out of money that was set aside for a transfer facility. I'm not interested in supporting this amendment if it is, you know, a commitment to some kind of program that, you know, we don't have any idea of. So if, you know, if the amendment is really to have some folks get together and sit down and talk about, you know, what might some possibilities be, that's fine. But I think we need to be clear about that, that, you know, we're not, we're not, I mean, there's a reason Calix is getting out of the recycling business, and that is factual and it's financial. And so we need to bear that in mind.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Olson, and then we'll look to Ms. Beeler.
So one idea that's kind of rolling through my head right now, after listening to Alderman Straight, is I'm prepared to vote on a recycling program tonight as well. I think we have heard a lot of input, we've heard a lot of debate. What I would be more interested in right now is voting on whether or not we are going to pursue a single-stream recycling program with the caveat that we would get the input from our residents on whether we can hit that 4,000 threshold. We're kind of, we're still doing a survey in essence, but we're doing it with the idea that we're moving forward. And if we can get that threshold, then we get the ball rolling so that if recycling truly is something that's going to happen within the city of Minot, we can have it sooner than later. It's not in the form of a motion yet because I think that's going to mess things up, but that's a thought in my head.
Ms. Beeler.
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things if I could.
Please.
I agree with the comments that I've been hearing that there probably isn't a lot of purpose to continue a discussion between the city and Calix if the city is going to stay with the decision of a single-stream program. And it's just simply the way it works. We can't do single-stream, and it would require a major shift for the city to change from single-stream to sorted. And I've never tried to convince anyone to do that because, I mean, there's valid reasons for the city to decide on single-stream. So I think that trying to work together to do some kind of interim drop-off that is some sort of hybrid or, it just, it wouldn't work for us to try to do some kind of mix. And I am also hearing some sentiment that the city council is maybe not willing to financially support Calix to continue doing what we are, and we're not willing to continue our current program without some subsidy because it's losing a drastic amount of money, and that's why we're stopping it. So if that helps you feel sure of, okay, what your options are and what directions you can go, I just thought I'd offer that.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Beeler. Further discussion on the motion to amend, Alderman Wolski.
Final comment from me, Mr. Mayor, and so I can provide some very explicit clarity here. I do not support single-stream recycling. I think we have a clear example of how recycling works when you get clean, sorted material dropped off for you. And in that environment, it is not financially viable. So when we add the extra costs of having to pick up at the curb and sort, to me, that equation gets worse. And so I would like to explore alternative programs, and we have seen lots and lots of data on single-stream programs and single-stream programs with a MRF and single-stream programs with two times a month versus four times a month. But the caveat in all of the different information that we have seen is that it's all been single-stream. And I do not believe that that particular model is viable and the right choice for this community. And so that is why I'm going to support the amendment, because I want one more opportunity to sit down and see if there is any construct that is viable. And I'm, I am open to potentially subsidizing the continued operation of Calix under their current model. And so I don't want to eliminate anything right now, and these are the pieces that I felt like, that I feel like I have not yet had the full conversation. I think the council's struggling because there's a lot of lack of, I think the city manager's absolutely right, there's an enormous amount of muddiness, lack of clarity. But, final comments.
We have a motion to amend, creating an ad hoc committee on the discussion as described by Alderman Straight, seconded by Alderman Padugula. Final discussion on the motion to amend. Final discussion. Please call the roll.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolski?
Yes.
Sitma?
No.
Janser?
No.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
No.
Padugula?
Yes.
Motion fails, four to three. We are back to the original motion of approving the statistical analysis that was proposed as option number two, if I'm remembering correctly. Discussion on the original motion. Alderman Olson.
Only to repeat what I said earlier, I think the information is valid. I think that the information should come after we have decided that we are going to look at a voluntary program. So the information's good, I would rather see it in a different order.
Further discussion. Alderman Padugula.
Would my sister alderperson be amenable to a motion to move in that direction then and just be done with it?
Yes, I will. I think we have to vote on this motion first, but that would be my intent, would be to make a motion if this motion fails.
Okay.
Seeing no more further discussion, we will vote on the motion to approve a survey, statistical analysis survey on recycling within the people that are serviced by the Minot, let's see, serviced by the Minot Public Works Garbage Department. I, sanitation, thank you. It's getting late. Eloquent, I know. Please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
No.
Padugula?
Yes.
Straight?
No.
Wolski?
No.
Sitma?
Yes.
Motion failed. Alderman Olson.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that the city of Minot pursue a voluntary, single-stream, curbside recycling program with the caveat that we can meet the 4,000 participation rate before the program would begin.
Perhaps some clarification on how we meet that threshold.
A survey will have to be part of that, you know, the Public Works would have to conduct a survey in some fashion to find out if we have the support needed.
Second that.
Seconded by Alderman Padugula. I would look to Jason as, is that enough lead direction on conducting a survey that would then, if it meets the 4,000 threshold for a voluntary program?
Mayor Sitma, I guess in fear of getting into a situation where I prevent, present data that could come into question, you know, the quickest, dirtiest way would be to gin up a bunch of questions, get out a quick survey monkey poll, you know, ultimately, if we can get 5, 6,000 people respond, and there's 4,000 of them that say, let's recycle, like I said, that no data is bad data, and that's, I've got there 4,000 people that say they want to recycle. However, like I said, we, you know, survey monkey results have come under scrutiny in the past, and so I guess that's why I brought the options back to you folks, and what sort of data would you guys be comfortable with?
Alderman Padugula.
What's the problem with sending out a little card with each water bill?
Mayor Sitma, Alderman Padugula, just going off of experience when we went to automated garbage, we sent out basically a postcard to every, every resident and asked them, you know, select your garbage can size. We probably only had about 2,500 people that responded. That can be read one of two ways. Some people looked at the card and said, I don't care what size I have, give me whatever. So those people, there could be a large group of people that maybe would have weighed in had they cared more. So it's just, sometimes we have really mixed results when we send stuff out and ask. Generally, when we, when we put some of these questions on, you know, on Facebook or digital media, they really get good attention and a lot of hits, so.
City Manager Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I may be alone in my thinking here, but I would, just as a piece of advice for the council to consider, I would be very much against doing a survey monkey poll and basing a $2 or $3 million program based on survey monkey results. I just don't think that's responsible. I think you need a statistically valid survey if you want to hit a threshold that you can stand up if the program fails, if it succeeds or whatever. We've done the pro forma, we know what it says, we have to hit that mark. I don't, I don't want to get into this issue of multiple voting or who voted that wasn't part of the program or questioning the data, and what if we're at 4,000 and we don't know what the integrity of the data is? I just, I would caution you to not do that kind of a survey as a decision point for whether you should start a recycling program. Now, maybe you could do that kind of a program to find out, hey, how big of a bin would you like? Okay, maybe that's not that huge of a deal. But to build a $2 and $3 million program, $2 to $3 million program off a survey monkey, I just would not advise that.
Alderman Olson.
I would include that as part of my motion then, that it be statistically valid survey.
Does the second agree?
He certainly does. After two years of graduate school statistics, he does.
So once again, the motion is that to approve a single-stream voluntary recycling program if we can conclude that the 4,000 threshold would be met through a statistically valid survey. I think I've got that right. We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Question, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Wolski.
There's a, there's a number that's been tossed around here tonight a little bit, and I'm not entirely sure where it's come from, and it's this $4,000 participation rate number. If, wherever that came from, Jason, you can share that with me, whether you have it off the top of your head, I would, I think I would prefer it, to see that in wherever our documentation on all this has been.
Mayor Sitma, Alderman Wolski, so that was in my last presentation where I laid out the 20-year pro forma. And when you look at the initial part of the program, when participation, I would have to go back and look, I think I assumed a 50% opt-out rate. And when you're, it was larger than that, it was a 60% opt-out rate. So when you're on that end of the program, the beginning years are the most expensive because you have less people participating, and that number stabilizes kind of around that, around that 4,000 number. It's a, it's a pretty comfortable It's a, it's a pretty comfortable number.
Further discussion on the motion. Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. I just give my thoughts on, I guess, the implementation of this program, and I agree with the, having the, the right data to back our decision, but again, we've heard it from some of the individuals that have reached out to us, we've been asked to, uh, make these decisions, as, as tough as they may be, we've got more information than, than I, I can, I could go through in an evening, I mean, we could devote a whole city council meeting to just the information that we got, but I think looking at, from my perspective and my thoughts, looking at the facts that we have, this is going to be a subsidized program, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. Um, Calix has, has, through their actions and, and their words, shown that, that you, we can't make the financials work out, and I personally recycle, but being a steward of, of the taxpayer dollars that we have, uh, been tasked with, uh, implementing and, and a $30 million increase in flood protection, I, I don't know if now is the time for us to dip our toes in the water. Um, I, I would love to see a, a, a recycling program implemented, I just, I, I cannot, um, I, I, as much as myself as a citizen would love to be able to do that, and, and I think a lot of other citizens would be, I don't know if it's the role of government to make those individuals whole, uh, uh, on this particular topic, at this particular juncture, um, and that's, that, that's where I'm coming from, just from a financial aspect, it, it's going to be heavily subsidized, and, and I just can't, I can't back that using, uh, city tax dollars in, in the, in the recycling market that we, uh, find ourselves.
Alderman Straight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's for Alderman Pittner's statement, it was my rationale all along of why I wanted to partner with Calix, 'cause I know that all of you have looked at the info, you're mindful of it, I don't believe that it's gonna pass, as much as I want it to pass, and if it does fail, I, I do want you, Mr. Mayor, to ask Alderman Olson to chair the community facilities, uh, discussion once again, that we would have to reallocate the $766,000 that was gonna go towards a transfer facility, and I don't see any reason why there's an existing program, we believe in Calix, why we wouldn't allocate some of that dollars to Calix to allow the program to move forward, 'cause we're gonna subsidize it one way or another. You're either gonna pay for it at the end with elevated land purchase agreements, future permitting costs at the landfill, um, I, morally, ethically, I don't wanna ship something to Minneapolis, uh, I'm mindful of the sheer volume of technology that we are just disposing of. There was just another article yesterday that Southeast Asia is like, we're, they're tired of it. I, I don't know how we can justifiably, and I'm, and I've stated earlier, sir, that I don't want perfect to be the enemy of good, but if it's a voluntary program, I'm gonna support a voluntary program. The people that wanna pay for it, if the data is there, we begin somewhere. I believe that as the evolution of recycling and the, just the country as a whole, uh, realizes that we have, uh, we don't have an infinite amount of resources, there's gonna be markets for this, there's gonna be an evolution for it, but, um, that's why it's important to me to try, in the interim, to carry forward with some partnership with Calix, sir. So, I'm gonna support a, a voluntary program, um, I can appreciate city manager's statement, and I, I appreciate it, Tom, that you're hearing the emotion and the, the desire, but you're, you're, you're being very steadfast in your role and telling us, you know, we've called into question Survey Monkey, so I appreciate you saying, "Do it statistically, get the best data we can, and then let's, let's move forward."
Further discussion on the motion. Alderman Wolski.
Mayor Sitma, thank you, um, if the monthly $2 or $3 or $4 cost would, would be enough to cover the, uh, the, the 4,000 participants that wanna volunteer, if we get to that number, then, then, you know what, I, I would be A-OK with that, but, but the problem with the concept that we have evaluated at this point is that it requires, uh, $1 to $2 million worth of reserves, uh, that are all of ours, to, to even get that particular concept off the ground, uh, and so, you know, there, at the end of the day, recycling is five times as expensive to single-sort and haul to Minneapolis as it is to address our waste stream here in Minot locally without putting it on the highway. I realize that is not the most, uh, environmentally stewardship-sounding statement, but, but I think that is the, the most environmentally responsible action, uh, and, and so instead of hauling this stuff to Minneapolis and contributing to a program that is Alderman Straight said is, is still in a significant state of disruption and upheaval as a result of 2018 and China, uh, we've observed the first ripple of that particular action over the last couple of years, which was the, the, the deconstruction of the US, uh, or, or the challenges associated with the American recycling model, uh, but the second wave of that ripple is just coming, a- a- as the secondary markets now start, that have been accepting some of this waste for the last couple of years after China said, "No," when they start saying, "No," there's gonna be another, there's gonna be another round of disruption, uh, and so I, this is not the right time for us to be speculating with these dollars. I think we need more time for this program, for this concept, for, for single-stream, if that's the way this country is gonna take this problem, uh, to sort out, but I don't think it's the right path for Minot right now. That said, I am not comfortable with doing nothing. Uh, I, I think we have a responsibility to be stewards, and so ultimately, if this vote fails, I, I will have some ideas at the next meeting, uh, of some actions we can take, uh, because, because saying no and stopping the conversation there, to me, is not an option.
Further discussion on the motion. City Manager Barry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I don't, I don't wanna, oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I don't, I don't wanna belabor the conversation, I, I think it's a, been a good conversation, and, um, there's one question I, I, I think is maybe more than just a nuance, but actually important in the way the program would be set up if this motion passes, if it doesn't, then it's a moot point, but I, I don't know how it's gonna go, so I just probably need to say this. The pro forma that was developed and shared with you at the last meeting included, uh, program assumptions that were disclosed that you, you might not recall, but one of them is important that hasn't been discussed because it does matter going forward whether the pro forma is sustainable even after the 4,000, you know, household count, and that is this issue of this one-time opt-out. You know, we've talked about a volunteer program, which I think we've got a good sense, if the volunteer program says that, you know, 4,000 households are willing to voluntarily accept recycling, we can launch the recycling program, that we feel good about. If that number dwindles over time, the program becomes unsustainable and becomes heavily subsidized, and now we're in a pickle. So in the pro forma that was developed, we put in a one-time opt-out, which was the volunteer program at the very beginning. You could, at the very beginning, say, "I don't wanna participate," and be left alone forever, until you sold your home, and then the next person that came in and bought your home, if they were a City of Minot, um, sanitation customer, would be required at that point to sign up, and that's how we build upon the numbers to keep the program sustainable. That is critical. If you're, if you're making a decision tonight based on the motion, as I understand it, to consider a recycling program, I don't wanna, I don't wanna mislead anyone, I don't want anyone to be, to misunderstand, the, the volunteer program is volunteer one time at the start, and then it's not volunteer anymore after that, when your house sells, or you, you know, you have a change of something like that, so I, I think we just have to be absolutely clear and transparent about that, because I, I could see in two years when somebody moves from one side of town to the other and they say, "Wait a minute, I thought this was a volunteer program, now I'm, now I'm being forced with recycling, I never wanted it, I didn't have it, I should be grandfathered," that's not how we've contemplated this program, so maybe some clarification in the motion in the second would be helpful because the program wouldn't work without that point.
Alderman Olson.
Yeah, and I agree that I think, I was considering all of that, and I think this first step is really finding out if the support is there. Um, after that, obviously, we're going to have to know an exact number, we're going to have to contact each one of our sanitation customers to know who is going to opt in or opt out, so I think we would get to that point, but initially, we're just looking to see if we're even in that ballpark for support.
And I think, uh, Alderman Olson, and maybe it's clarification from my standpoint too on the vote, with the single-stream 4,000 threshold, with that voluntary program, is that, and, uh, once they sign up, they're always in? Uh, how, or if the threshold is met, it passes and the vote is done?
I, I guess my thought on it is, again, we're looking to see if that support is there, but when it's a, a statistically valid survey, they're not really reaching 4,000 people. I mean, they might, I, I don't, I'm not a good statistician, even though I did go to grad school, but I, you know, maybe they're contacting 500 people or 700 people, I don't know, but I know that they will use the numbers to be able to give us an indication if that support is there. I don't anticipate that they truly are contacting 4,000 households or 5,000 households.
City Manager Barry.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think I'm clear on, on what you intend, Alderman Olson, so if I could repeat it, just make sure that we're all clear, so the statistically valid survey is really just information for us to have to know if we should continue this conversation, and if, if we do get to 4,000 that look like they, they would, they would go, you're not saying that we should immediately launch the program.
No.
You're saying, "That allows us as a checkpoint, we pass that checkpoint and we continue, and then we do our own legitimate opt-in, opt-out, not survey, but you like, you're, you know, I guess it's kind of like a survey until it becomes binding with the ordinance, and it would be that particular data that you would say has to meet the 4,000 threshold in order for us to move forward."
Yes.
Okay.
It would.
Got it.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Alderman Straight.
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't wanna muddy the waters at all, but I, I do wanna put it on the radar that I think also at that time, it's gonna be important that we are looking at, uh, the discussion of tipping fees, we're looking at the independent business haulers, and the, that we are allowing that our facilities would then be able to accommodate them dumping if they created their own recycling programs as well within our transfer facility, uh, franchise agreements to those, uh, to that effect, sir, I, I, I would like that we're, again, we're back to managing the entire stream, uh, and, and having a, a detailed, thoughtful approach to maximizing and including the apartments and everything else in, in the, the programs, sir.
Certainly, discussion as, as it moves forward. Further discussion on the motion, that is, motion by Alderman Olson, seconded by Alderman Padrigula. Alderman Olson.
Only one final comment, just so that it does clarify, I, I think that, I mean, the purpose of my motion is so that people understand what it is that we are pursuing. I think it's been too broad in the past, was it voluntary, was it involuntary? At least with this idea, they'll know that it's a voluntary program.
Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
No.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolski?
No.
Sitma?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion is approved, that takes us to our department reports, or am I missing one here?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted some clarification-